Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Bear.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Alwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
Thank you. Operated, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Please, we would ask you to step forward and state your name. You have three minutes to speak and address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Opportunity for public comment.
Peter Bormuth. I just want to note that we have the Keely Park site improvements. So people don't know what Keely Park is. It's the fairgrounds. And I just want to note that it's directly downstream from the most polluted stretch of water on the Grand River in Jackson County. And this pollution has occurred because of mischna plating, leaving toxic chemicals at the site after they decided to abandon it and allow it to be seized by the county in bankruptcy. So I just want to say that this works against everything we're trying to do at the park. This works against ever- at the fairgrounds, excuse me, at Keely Park. This works against everything we're trying to do with the Grand River. Jeff Snyder, the Drain Commissioner, has succeeded in getting the Grand River part of the water trails here. And if you can't go on a river or if it's so polluted you don't want to go on a river, that detracts from the very efforts that this body is making to improve the fairgrounds. I'd like to point that out.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none. Approval of the minutes of the February 5th study session. I have a motion in support. Any questions? Corrections? Deletions? Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's just my technology or not, but I don't have the minutes. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's my technology. They're there.
All set?
All set.
Is there any items you'd like to have corrected? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do the carried. I have some regrettable news for all county commissioners. Item five, Mr. Overton tells me will not be happening this morning. So at this time, I'd like to offer the floor to Mr. Jeff Hovater, the Jackson County Parks Director. Mr. Hovater.
Thank you. Good morning. Let me get this slide presentation up and we'll go. Okay. So my goal this morning is to bring all commissioners up to date on where we are with this project. We've been working on it for quite a long time and we have made a lot of progress. If this winter decides to let go, we'll make a lot more progress. So you'll see up on the screen a 3D rendition of what the site will look like in completion. This is produced from an actual set of data points, survey work that was done by Spicer Engineering and then all of the completed construction drawings were dumped, quite frankly, into a computer. And this is the 3D rendition of the site that was generated based on those construction drawings. You're looking at a number of site improvements. You can see that the original track has been removed. Go here. So this is a site as we see it today. So the track is being removed on this turns one and two from the Gumper Building across to the Grand Stand. Everything south of that will be removed and replaced by this 510 space new parking lot that has 178 new trees. We'll have all-new LED 30-foot and some 18-foot security lighting poles that will go in. You have 100-plus-year electrical grid that, if you're familiar with the fairgrounds, has been strung overhead with a series of nearly 150 poles. Doesn't seem like that, but they're everywhere and most of them have already been removed. But that's all going underground with a brand-new electrical system. We have to rebuild the storm management system. We have two outlets that end up, as most water does, in the Grand River, but these are filtration systems that are designed to, in chambers, filter the water so by the time it gets to the river, it's very clean and pure. That's been reviewed by MDEQ and permits have been issued for that storm management system. So both they and the county Drain Commissioner have reviewed it and found it to be a very acceptable system. We have to build out the food vending area, which is located actually in the parking lot closest to the new event center. And that has to have sanitary, potable water and power for 60 food vending companies. And we have a new events plaza that's being built that sits behind the event center and in front of the Gumper so it connects the Gumper Building, connects three points. It connects the Gumper Building, the new event center, and the fairgrounds midway together. And then we obviously have a new park entry drive off of Ganson and Jackson that's being built along with the drop-off zone area for the new event center. And then, of course, all of the new walkways and landscape flower beds that are being added to the project. So we're breaking this down into two phases and I'm going to go back and forth, three phases altogether, but there are two phases of this site project. So if you could draw a line from the corner of the Gumper Building up here behind the new event center and draw right along the edge of the parking lot and the new drive out to Ganson Street, everything west of that, basically the parking lot and the removal of the track is really the first phase of the site that we have to get going on immediately. That work is, needs to be complete by August 1st in time as of the essence. So we're, again, we're waiting for winter to break here and we hope to be underway. That is a huge project. So we have bids out at the moment or we're taking bids for the general site work and those bids will be in on the 13th. That includes the removal of the existing asphalt, all of the site excavation, removal of the track, demo fencing and any other structures that are in the way. That includes basically putting down first the sanitary, then the storm system, steward manage- storm management system and then the water and then the electric lines have to go in and all of that has to be buried. We have to do all of our fine grade work, have to get in all of our concrete walks, all of our parking islands and curbing that goes with that. And then we have to get our rough and finished grade asphalt down. And then last but not least, then we have all of our landscape planning that has to go in. So there's a lot of work to be done in a very short period of time. The Phase Two will basically wait to the fall and that's everything east of that line that I drew from the Gumper out to the Ganson and that's everything around the new event center. There's no point trying to put in all of the hardscape site improvements when we'll still have lots of heavy equipment and lots of contractors, including those doing finish work inside, driving their trucks, leaking oil, making tire marks all over our brand-new materials and walkways. So we'll hold off until the building is substantially underway and the shell is up and wintered in. And that'll take us to sometime in mid-October to early November that we'll be doing this Phase Two work, which, like I said, will include the drop-off driveway area, the entry walkways and sidewalks, the event center loading dock areas, the events plaza area and then, of course, all of the trees and landscape beds that go around that. And then Phase Three is really dealing with the exterior fencing along Ganson and Blackstone up to the Grand Stand. That exterior chain link and barbed wire fencing will be removed and replaced with a new, more decorative fence that will run behind the parking lot. Again, I'll go back to the front page here. So it'll run from, right along that walkway that you see on the north edge of the new parking lot and it'll then connect into the new event center and connect into the existing fence out on Blackstone. And so everything from Blackstone up to Ganson from that point and all the way across to the Grand River, will no longer be any fencing in that area. Will be open to the public for public use 365 days of the year.
Jeff, did you want questions as you go or would you-
Yeah, you can ask them whenever you want. I talk, so just interrupt me.
Okay. So on that first slide, the color slide, a couple of things. It looks like the northern half of the track or even more is still there. That plan to leave that dirt as it is, including down to in front of the grandstands or not?
Yes. Well, we'll address the grandstand first. The grandstand dirt has always needed to stay because that plays a huge role in a number of shows that we do. Specifically, the demolition derby, rodeo are the two big ones that take place and are traditional parts of and, quite frankly, financially important parts of the fair's success. So the dirt there will always remain eventually in a coming phase, but not in this budget. It does not fit in this budget. The north end of the track won't be removed. But in the overall master plan, it's intended that everything except the area running in from the grandstand will be removed. And a lot of different moving parts in that next phase with buildings in the master plan. There's a new exhibition arena that it calls for. There's at least two more barns that are needed for exhibition purposes. So there's quite a bit of movement. And there's, of course, the trail along the Grand River that impacts some of those buildings that are in that phase. But that is not part of this budget at this time.
Okay. And then the letter I you've got designated as the vendor area. Is there a reason why that wouldn't make more sense at the north end up in the green area, which would allow the use of that parking lot to park cars during that time?
Because the north area is already used during the fair. That's where all of the large draft horse exhibitions take place. And so that's used on a daily basis by the 4-H community for all of their exhibition at this point.
I'm talking about the grassy area. That's what you're talking about as well?
Yeah. Yeah. It looks, because it looks open right now like it's unused, but it actually is used for a significant amount of programming during the fair week period of time.
I just hate to see the loss of all that parking with the vendors in that area during the fair week.
And we'll address that as we, as I go through this presentation, some of the parking solutions that we've come up with. Yes?
You just mentioned the draft horse exhibition area. Where would that be?
It's in the north end of it has always been here. If you look at, the picture shows a Ferris wheel. And again, let me say about the position of the fair rides. Those are animations. So those are pictures that were planted in there by the architect. We can move any piece of equipment anywhere we want. So we have talked to Mid-America, who are a traction company that provides all of these rides and the Ferris wheel can just as easily be moved to the south end of this midway area. That's something that the 4-H community, or at least a few folks, have addressed with me in concerns to the distraction to the animals. But yes, that north end that you see is open, mado behind the Ferris wheel is the area where traditionally, I say traditionally, every year that's where the draft horses are and the exhibition takes place.
Yes. I've asked this question before and I'll ask it again. I've been told before that, "Don't worry about this. These are just placeholders that can be moved around."
Yep.
But if there's a placeholder to be moved around, I need to see the placeholder. I'm not seeing it. Currently, east of the Gumbert Building is where the non-draft horses, the riding horses.
Correct.
This is where the show arena is.
Yes.
The show arena seems to be receiving some of the 178 new trees. The show arena fencing is gone. The show arena surfacing is gone. So the area where the 4-H exhibitors and the open horse show exhibitors ride and compete is not on here. And the area where the draft horses compete at the very north end of what was the inside of the track, yes, those areas need to be preserved. I'm still concerned with the security fencing between the Grand River and the fairgrounds. And I know it's been some people's intention to run the pedestrian walkway through this part of the fairgrounds. Where I've seen that non-motorized path go is right through the current 4-H and open horse show exhibit arena. So I'm concerned that the exhibit arena doesn't show up here. There's no placeholder that has to be moved around later, maybe. The path is going through the show arena. The trees are being planted in the show arena. The, what the draft horses need to compete, because I've watched them year after year, is completely different than what the riding horses need to compete.
Right.
And I've watched, I've competed in that year after year. So it bothers me that those provisions still aren't here.
Those, so this is a computer-generated graphic of what it is we're constructing now. Those don't show because we don't have any construction data, no engineering work, no design work whatsoever has been done on any of that phase of the project. Where you look at the corner of the Gumper Building closest to the river and to the south, so the southeast corner of the Gumper Building, you draw a line in your mind, draw a line straight over to the river. Everything south of that is being worked on. Therefore, any of the horse exhibition that happens on that backside of the Gumper and actually, there's a lot of trailers and campers or day campers, I'll call them.
They're not behind the Gumbert Building. They are up further north. They're kind of behind the Sheep and Goat Building.
Right. But all of that is going to be exactly as it is now and will be in the foreseeable future until this body decides to fund that phase of the project. So nothing related to 4-H is being affected along the back, the riverside of the Gumper, the backside of the Gumper Building, all the way up to North Avenue. None of that's being impacted in any way, shape or form.
Okay. Well, if Spicer surveyed the arena and it is an element that we're not working on right now, or we're not working on elements F, F, C, none of those elements have been working on. They are shown. Please ask them to show the horse arena. If it's not shown, people are going to plan to put trees there and yes, that plan can change, but they shouldn't be showing it.
Well, there's a master plan. This is a construction, a computer-generated construction. There is a master plan. We work everything off the master plan. The master plan hasn't changed unless you all decide to change it. You adopted it. That has all of those placeholders in place for it. That's what everything gets worked off of. So the placeholder is on that master plan. It shows the, a number of new barns. It doesn't show them in their architectural form because we haven't designed them.
What new barns are shown?
It shows, the master plan shows barns. It shows a new arena. It shows the path going through the park. All of that, including this parking lot, the event center, all of this stuff was shown. To this detail, no, because you don't have the construction data to show it to this level. This is a computer-generated. In order to add it to that in any earnest or truthfulness, because this stuff is accurate. What you're seeing here is accurate. If we just throw a barn up there, people will look at it and say, or a horse arena and say, "Well, that's the horse arena you're going to build." And that is absolutely untrue. We don't know what the size. We don't know what the architectural design. We don't know anything about this horse arena. We have not, or exhibition arena. We have not designed it yet. This is-
I'm aware of all of that.
Okay. Well-
I'm aware of all that.
Commissioner Bear, if you reviewed the master plan yet?
It's not been made-
Yeah, you saw it.
I saw it at the one meeting and I asked the same thing at that point.
No, no. It's available online for you to review from the county.
I have nothing else to find it.
I'm asking if you've taken a look at it yet. Maybe you need to review that to have a better understanding of the direction that the fair is going to be going, the Keely Park area is going to be going on a go-forward basis. None of, nothing north of the track, outside of it, is going to be constructed now. What he's trying to explain to you is everything's going to stay operationally the way it is going forward until we get information on it. We have no information on it yet because we haven't allocated funds nor have we began planning it yet. So you're asking for stuff that doesn't exist yet.
I understand every syllable of that.
Yeah.
Then why do you ask the question?
We're not going to be doing work on the Gumbert Building, but it is shown accurately. We are not doing work on the horse barns, but it's being shown accurately.
Has it been-
We're not doing work on the horse arena.
Tony, has they're going to stay put, sir? Has they're going to stay put? For right now, that's why they're shown accurately. If we choose to change things, then you're going to get that type of study and plan back to you, sir. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. The existing horse arena, exhibit arena is in place. It's right there along the river as it is today.
I don't see it.
Huh?
I don't see it.
Yeah. Not the new one. The existing one is right there along the river.
What, he's talking about the open arena? I don't see the existing one.
You're talking about the arena that's under roof?
No. That's not the horse arena. Cows and pigs are in there.
Okay. Yes. They are not depicting, they did not pick up and depict any of the ground, I mean, any more than over here on the Blackstone side. There are a number of, like the milking barn doesn't show. The computer-animated stuff did not pick that up. We're not moving it. So that's what I'm saying. Just because this picture does not show it at the moment, we're not tearing it out. It's not part of this project. The horse arena, as you're describing, the open-air horse arena, not under roof, that's on the backside of these buildings along the river is staying intact exactly as it is now. Nothing from the southeast corner of the Gumper Building over to the river, everything north along the river will be exactly as it is today for the foreseeable future until this body approves a plan for that phase of construction and approves the funding for it. And until you do that, nothing's going to change. It's going to be exactly the way it's always been. So if this, if this, if this computer-generated animated graphic, which was designed to show the parking lot in the midway area and the new event center and the relationship between the event center and the Gumper and the fair midway and the new parking and the existing America One, that's its intent is causing somebody confusion about something that isn't going to happen until years in the future, quite frankly, then I apologize. We were not intending to get into that detail. I don't have the money nor do I have the data points to make any of that. So they left that out unintentionally, but it's not stuff that's being worked on nor described in this project.
Sorry. I just don't see that it requires any detail.
Well, it does because-
Detail for the Gumbert Building. No more detail than that is needed to show the horse arena.
Well, this isn't-
To make this-
Okay.
Make this graphic-
It would require me to go out and hire a surveyor to survey all of that space that I haven't surveyed and require me to gather all those data points. So it would cost some dollars to go do that and then put it in the computer. This isn't somebody drawing this picture. This is a computer that only takes what data you put in. So you've got to gather that data and that costs me money and I didn't spend money to do that.
Mr. Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, can we talk about the rides being able to be relocated?
Uh-huh.
Wouldn't they need to be in the same place and have piers into the ground like the Ferris wheel to hook onto or on asphalt somehow?
Well, two things. One, when I say they can move around, they can be, they're interchangeable along that midway. Other words, when you look at the midway from the parking lot up to the Ferris wheel to the north and then from the Ferris wheel back down to the parking lot, those two walkway areas, they're interchangeable within that format because that's where the power is. We can't like put something out here on Blackstone or some there by the barns to the north. They, that has to stay within the midway grid that's been designed for the midway, but the Ferris wheel could be at one end versus the other. In terms of level surfacing, no. Blake sets up on, in fact, his comment to me was, "Other than Jackson County, I don't know another location where I set any of my rides on pavement." I'm basically in a field somewhere in Ohio or Indiana or Illinois and our systems level, what we can't set up in is a wetland. So it's got to be solid ground. And the infill area is solid. We park cars on it. Nobody gets lost even in rainy weather. But we will obviously be rolling those areas and firming those areas up just to be sure.
Yeah. The infill does, we've had to pull cars out of there during thunderstorms, you know, with ruckers. But maybe with the track gone, it won't all try to pond up.
Yeah. What we'll be looking at is that when we get in and put in the granular material that makes the walkways, we'll be addressing any imperfections that- and Mid-America will be in town. Blake has pledged to come when we get to that point.
As you are aware, that currently everything is mounted on asphalt.
Yes.
Do we do?
Yes.
Okay.
We're one of the few places in America that he gets to do that and so-
I know that. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir. How you doing?
Good.
By the way, it looks pretty impressive to me.
Thank you.
I do just have a quick question just to clarify some issues. And primarily, it's about the parks millage that was passed recently. I've been told and I believe that none of those funds will go towards the new event center. Is that correct still?
That's correct. The new event center is, we're talking about this beautiful new building that I'll show you later in the presentation. All of those dollars were allocated from a private source. I say private source. We all know America One's contribution as well as bonds that this body passed a year ago.
Okay. And then my second question would be, you indicated that you have a budget in place now when you were answering some of the questions.
We do. We do.
Is there a percentage of any of the millage funds that will be going towards the rest of Keely Park, AKA the fairgrounds?
Not currently.
Not currently.
When I say currently, I can't, two things. One, we have park. So one of the things we were very clear about during the millage is that the millage is for the development of our parks. The master plan for this site has the addition of, that's why the fencing is so important, with the removal of the fencing and the securing of what really becomes the fairgrounds. Everything north of this new parking lot is where all the barns are that are in the grandstand that drive the 4-H and drive the fair. But everything south of that now, as you can see from the current event center, you see a path that walks you to the new event center. You see the trees. You see this large green space on Ganson Street in front of the event center. All of that is planned for a future county park that would be open 365 days of the year to the public for a future county park that would be open 365 days of the year to the public and accessible with parking and, uh, public restrooms. Some of the millage dollars, if this body sees fit, could be used for those types of improvements, as well as the, the, uh, the support amenities like additional parking, um, and, and so forth. But the, the, the dollars aren't being spent on things that are specifically drive the fair or the fairgrounds. We're not building at this point any barns or amenities that support the fair with millage dollars.
Thank you for your response. And also, so at this time, you wouldn't have any concrete numbers as to what would be going to the.
You're going, you're going to give those, the whole purpose of this meeting is to, um, get you up to speed because not everybody in the room is in the same place and has been a part of this project from its original long journey. So that's my job. Um, Monday, the, uh, uh, General Government Committee, Chris Bolt, will make a presentation and, and I'll be there to support him to talk a little more about the project and the project budget and, uh, some of, sort of more detail of what the, uh, the construction aspects are. Uh, bids for this part of the project, the site work, not the building, but the site work, which is everything that supports the building, quite frankly, all the landscaping, trees, parking, everything I just went through, um, those bids are due back on the 13th. We will be vetting those as fast as we can, get through them, um, determine and make a recommendation back to this full board at the, uh, full board meeting, uh, is that the 19th, I believe, of March. And we'll know on the 13th at some point by the end of the day whether we're in budget or we're looking for additional financial support. It's, there's no way to go halfway here. We have a number of challenges that, uh, we'll just get to that slide.
Let me chime in while you're doing that. In regard to, I wouldn't say that, uh, um, no part of our millage, Parks Millage would go to this operation down here. Because, uh, frankly, the Parks Office is going to be in that new building. Our millage is an operational millage for Parks, for our Parks program. So clearly, just the fact that they're paying some overhead, uh, you know, electric bill or whatever you feel, well, for the Parks Office, it comes from that operating millage.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, not all that millage was designated to, you know, like, we're going to just build new parks or anything like that. That's not the case.
Well, the way the millage was presented to the public was that we were potentially going to have to shut some parks down, and it was, it, to be fair, it was not about the fairgrounds. At least, that wasn't the public perception.
Yeah, but Mike.
We agree with that statement, that it's not about the fairgrounds. In fact, uh, the construction dollars, as, as was indicated, America One, and then the county sold a $4 million bond to take care of that construction process. What Jeff's alluding to, we'll talk more about when those bids come in, is not the building itself, but some of the electrical and, you know, the asphalt and the other things that, uh, we believe are going to challenge our budget. Uh, because for those elements, we only have $2 million.
I appreciate the honesty.
But, but far as the millage itself, it is the Parks Millage. In fact, um, uh, it's all, it's, at this point, it's all the money that the Parks has to operate. So we're not, uh, going to be subsidizing it. Uh, we've got some struggles, uh, that I'm working on with General Fund. Uh, we don't have the money right now to be subsidizing it with regular additional tax dollars, if you will, so. But we'll talk more about that as, uh, as time moves on. This presentation today was, uh, intended to give you the, the large picture overview of, of what's going on down there.
Yeah, and I, and, and that's my bad, because I, I think capital when I'm giving this presentation. What Mike's alluding to is operational. Um, comparatively speaking, my, uh, my previous life for 25 years in Battle Creek, we, uh, we built, similarly, we built a new, uh, 100,000 square foot recreation center and water park, um, during my tenure there. And, uh, and the General Fund, because my offices were located in that building and previously they were located in another building where the General Fund supported, um, my cost of paying heat and light and, uh, uh, square footage for office space. Basically, the General Fund paid the, uh, the recreation, uh, center fund rent to you, to rent office space. This will have some kind of similar configuration. So if you're staying pure of heart, the, the millage dollars, which I operate off, that portion I operate off, I got to set up shop somewhere, and I'm paying now for heat and light and expenses to have an office. So if I move down there, we'll, we'll move some of those dollars or charge ourselves rent, so to speak. Okay, so, um, I want to make sure I didn't, uh, didn't miss anything. This is, uh, a less sexy-looking, um, picture of the site construction that gives you a, uh, maybe a, a less glitzy idea of where the food vendors, particularly, you can see the actual trailers and how they set up, and the food court is the, uh, the area in the north part of the parking lot that's running horizontally, uh, and it has some darker shades to it, but that's, well, those are all picnic tables, and that's the food court area as it lays out. Um, you know, the other thing that stands out in this drawing is the number of, uh, islands and where the trees are laying out here. Um, we, we have gone through a, a number of, so, timing, I gave this to you earlier, but, but, but March, we, we have to make a decision and, uh, and go on this project, or there's, there's no middle ground here, guys. Um, there's just no middle ground. We either have to go now and get this first phase done by August 1, or we shouldn't go because you can't have it in half, halfway or three-quarters of the way torn up and run a fair. There's just no way to do that. It, it'll be a complete mess. So, so we, we, soon as the weather breaks, we've got to get, doing the demo, get the earthwork done and get ready. One of the things I haven't said to you, but I want to be transparent, because, because Christopher will talk, it is likely, although we're taking an alternate bid for asphalt work, uh, to go down, uh, by an outside contractor, um, JDOT will be taking a look at that because we believe that we can do it less, for less dollars in-house. And so it's likely that JDOT will be doing all of the asphalt work for us, uh, which is, for me, a, 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 an easier way to do it in terms of speed and timing. Uh, it's a variable we can control. Um, then, then the second portion of this, the approval of the general site, electrical infrastructure will come to you in April. Uh, that's the last thing that goes in the holes before we bury them, so we have an extra month. We can really look at those. That will be, quite frankly, we anticipate that the cost for the electrical infrastructure will be, uh, nearly as much as all of the other site work combined, the concrete, the demolition, the dirt excavation, the sanitary, or sanitarian storm sewers, um, plumbing. All of that will, will likely be no more than the cost for the electrical. The electrical is the, uh, the expensive part of this. But part of that is, and, and I'll be quite frank with y'all, uh, we haven't had enough power at the fairground for decades, and we've, uh, let's just say we've operated, I'm the new guy, remember, I'm finding this stuff out, we've operated outside the bounds or, uh, capacity of our transformers on site to supply power. There are ways to go beyond that. Uh, they aren't always, um, the best choices, but we've somehow muddled through for several decades with these, these, uh, transformers. But we've been living on borrowed time, and it only takes one transformer to blow out during the fair to create a safety issue, but more important, just as importantly, you don't have a fair. You used, you have no, it's not like you can come up with a new transformer overnight and turn the, turn all the rides and food vendors back on. So this cleans all of that up and it's, it's time. I mean, it's, it's a 100-year-old infrastructure. And then the fencing I mentioned. Uh, what's missing? Is there a slide missing?
Well, all we have, sorry, guys, that's all.
Yeah. Oh, this, this PowerPoint isn't loaded on Board Docs?
No, it's a different one.
Sorry, I can't get onto Board Docs, you guys. I get closed out, and I sent an email yesterday. I know Delane wasn't here, but I sent it to everybody asking somebody to load the PowerPoint. I'll get it to you. All right. Yeah, you guys have, you have the video I'm going to show you here in a few minutes. I want to move on to the building itself. Um, so the building is 36,000 square feet in size. Um, 20,000 square foot of it make up the main, uh, hall, the, the space that, uh, uh, would be better, so I hate to use the word comparable, but you, you've got 14,000 square feet in the existing event center, so this is 6,000 square feet more of a box that it has the ability to run a lot of different types of events. Uh, it can be broken down into with an acoustical, fully acoustical wall that will, uh, uh, cut across the, the middle of the building, um, and create two separate spaces out of that, a 13 and a 7,000, so two events could be going on in that same space. We have a 1,600 square foot public meeting space that is comparable to the size of this room minus these poles, so you can actually see. Um, and, uh, then you have 3,800 square foot feet that you would call the lobby. We use the term pre-function space because it's designed to be able to host events independently by itself. Then you have 2,000 square foot of office customer service area, and then you have the 1,400 square foot catering kitchen adjacent to the big box and the meeting space. Uh, this gives you a picture, if you all can see it. I apologize. I, I will get you all the PowerPoint presentation so you have it and you can, uh, you can, you get two more shots in the, in the cycle to, to ask those questions. Um, but this shows the big box, shows the acoustical wall that separates the two spaces, or one space into two spaces, um, shows the meeting, meeting space, which is to the, to the far, uh, far right, um, shows the pre-function space, which is L-shaped and looks like the lobby, and then all of the, uh, back, back of house, our electrical room, our IT room, our, uh, our, our trash area, small office for the setup, uh, uh, design person, and storage, those types of things. Um, a lot's going on there. Remember, this is a contract we already have with Rockford. We're working towards their final general trades bids came in last week, um, on Friday, so they're just, uh, working through those. Those are subcontractors of Rockford. But, uh, that's your carpentry, your steel work, your masonry, your concrete, flatwork, um, painting, uh, all of the things that, most of which, many of which will happen in the second half of the project. Um, once they vet those and we have numbers, we'll convert, we'll do one amendment to the existing Rockford contract that will convert it to a guaranteed maximum price. So it'll lock in our price, so anything that happens during construction, um, is, is something that Rockford then absorbs in terms of cost, if something, they believe, obviously, that once they have these bids in, that their, their number is really solid, and, uh, and they're not, they, they're willing to take that risk, and we want to lock that number in. But construction mobilization for them is planned for, for March 20th. Uh, again, whether, whether, uh, uh, being on our side, they'll finish excavating the asphalt that's already been taken up, they'll finish excavating the site and get it ready, and then get the, uh, the footings down, um, and, uh, and, and get that work ready to go. The shell and core, the shop drawings have been completed by, um, Kirkstra. Kirkstra is a company, there are only a couple of them in the country.
Jeff, just so you guys know, I did, uh, I just emailed that to all of you. You all have it. I've also asked that it be put on Board Docs as well.
Okay.
But you do have in your email, it's PowerPoint.
Anyways, getting back to that, so your walls of your main box are eight-inch thick, um, 30-foot by 28-foot, uh, pre-cast concrete panels that are built in a factory and shipped and then set in place with a crane, and they lock together. And, uh, uh, so that'll, that box will go up very quick. It'll be very durable, um, very energy efficient. Uh, it's, rather than going with a metal skin that tends to be less durable over time, this building will stand, stand the test of time. This'll, this'll be a building that'll be around for 100 years. Um, and, uh, those, those will be coming on site. Uh, they've actually already built them in the factory. The shop drawings are done, and they actually have poured and built them, and they're just waiting for that. So that's way ahead of schedule. Then their mechanical, electrical, plumbing, rough-ins, roof deck, concrete flooring, all of that's going to happen this summer. The pre-function office, the meeting rooms, which is actually the, the spaces that are built on the outside of that big concrete box, that's where you get into more of your traditional, uh, steel structures and your metal studs. Um, that'll have a, a masonry and, uh, um, some, some metal, but a lot of glass. Um, and then, again, the stuff that happens once we're closed in. It looks like the building's done. Everybody's excited. In reality, you got months to go because you've got your plumbing, electrical wiring all being pulled on the inside, your HVAC system's being installed, your, your, your finished, uh, uh, carpentry work, doors being hung, all that stuff that takes a lot more time than people think. Gold to be open, uh, February 26th. We have Beer Fest 2020 that we plan to use as our first event. It's ours, so we can practice on ourselves, because staff will have some, some, some get-up-to-speed time. And then we're, we're in discussions, and they're very excited, and they're very flexible, which is what we need, given our, not knowing what could happen with our construction schedule. But the Home Build, or Home Builders Association, Corey and, and Denise and I have met multiple times, and, uh, they're willing, we'll keep both buildings open. They won't oversell their spaces in the, in the existing build, uh, the Event Center building. But if we're ready, we're going to set up in the new building with them. So those will be the first two events that happen. That one, that one happens at the end of March. So these are some actual construction drawing, uh, profiles of the building, um, giving you different, different profiles. And then this is, gives you with the roof off, but the building up, a sense of scale in terms of the, the building and what it looks like. So what are the site challenges, or the project challenges for this building, and I'm going to bundle them with the site because they've been similar. Um, the site has been a challenge. We're not going to kid y'all. Um, it looks like a lot of space, but we're putting a lot into the space, so moving the parts around, um, and getting them, uh, adjusted, making, uh, M E D, M D E Q happy, real, in terms of our relationship to the river, um, making the, 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 the city, because this is a little unusual. I'll admit, this is, I've done a number of these large projects, but this is the first one where I've done it in technically another political jurisdiction that had a separate set of rules. And so working through that and trying to play nice in the sandbox has, uh, it, nobody, I'm not criticizing them, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying it's just more moving parts. And, yeah, and, and, and you've got to consider some of those issues in your relationship of your building in sight to all the other buildings in, in the community and particularly your neighbors. Um, and it's their job to make sure we consider our neighbors and that this all fits together seamlessly. So we've been working through those. Um, we had challenges with mechanical, electrical and plumbing that have put us way behind, five months behind. And those challenges were to, to, to do what's right and make sure that we, as best we can, that we had local participation in those trade areas. Um, but I think maybe our contractor was so focused on that piece of it that they forgot the other two pieces, which were time and money, and, uh, and we got behind. So we've gotten all that fixed, and, uh, we've just lost the five months. I can't fix time. But, uh, uh, Hurst Electric is, is, uh, on board here locally, and, uh, pricing is in budget, and so we feel really good. The one that, that's really kind of kicking us in the butt and all of this, but we'll see how things go moving forward with bids yet to come in, and that's just simply the market. We've had, as much as we're staying local, local, local where we, where we absolutely can, we've had a number of local contractors just say, thanks, but no thanks. I've got more work than I can handle now, and I can't fit you into my schedule. I had two excavators just say to us, came to the pre-bid, looked at us straight in the eye and said, I love this project, but there's no way I can do it with what I have on my schedule. Just can't do it. And so they, 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 I appreciate their honesty in telling us ahead of time that they weren't going to bid on it, but it wasn't because they felt anything was wrong, other than they just have too much work. And that's the nature of the market right now. And where you force, force that, pricing goes through the roof. So we're just working through those things. And then last is the budget for, the thing that's always forgotten, so I'm the one putting it on here, guys. Um, I, I talked to Mike occasionally about it, and that's furniture fixture and equipment, which is a fancy term for, I still have to buy a floor scrubber for this building. I still have to buy a lift for this building so I can get up and change light bulbs and, and hang things during these trade shows that are necessary. I still got to buy tables and chairs to support events. Um, I got to buy kitchen equipment for the, the catering kitchen. It, it, it gets built out. It has all the plugs and stuff the right way, but it doesn't have a walk-in cooler. It doesn't have the microwaves. It doesn't have the dishwasher, uh, the things that you need in there. So, um, I'm still working on that, and I'll be back to you, but we, uh, we got to figure that one out. Um, one of the things, by the way, that's really a challenge there of all the things is security and AV, the technology piece of it, which is much, at this point, much, uh, more than I thought it was going to be. But anyways, so we, we will, the, one decision that's still got to be made is this, like I mentioned, this guaranteed maximum price. So we hope to bring that back in the April cycle and lock that number down with Rockford. It's 95% there already and have been for a while, so I don't expect it to change. And we're, we're right at the budget number that we talked about a year and a half ago. Yes. Yes. No, we did not want that at that time. Because there's, if without design, this is a design, this is a design build. This isn't a, you hire, that, that's, that's the mis, I guess, in fairness, because three of you weren't here, a decision was made to do design build as opposed to the traditional design and then bid build. So Rockford is a contractor who is carrying the architect. So when we hired Rockford, we didn't know what the building would look like. We didn't know what size it would be. We knew nothing about the building, other than we wanted an event center. event center. And we hired Rockford to be the builder of it and to go out and hire a architect as the subcontractor to Rockford. Normally, the architect would work for us. We'd spend a year just doing design with the architect, have some construction drawings and then go out and bid it, and Rockford would be a general contractor, and they do that kind of work. But in this one, they have been as the builder onboard day one before a building, a site was ever designed. It was a blank slate. So we can't get to what the final price is until we design the building. We've spent a year designing the building, designing the site, and in this case with the building, we're now seeing what the pricing of the subcontractors on the market are. And what is built in ahead of time is their profit. We know exactly as a percentage based on the cost of the project, we know exactly what they'll get paid as fee, that's the term they use, but it's profit. And in this case, that fee is roughly $130,000, they're getting paid on a $6 million project, which is crazy low. So we ended up with one of the top contractors in the country at by far the lowest fee of anybody who put in a proposal. So that's why we're where we're at, because we're doing design build as opposed to what you might think is the traditional process of design, bid, build.
I have worked on projects as the architect, where we did the design, bid, build process.
Yeah.
I have worked on projects as an architect under the
Design build.
... leadership of the contractor, where we did the design build.
Yeah.
We still gave them a maximum not to exceed price. If you don't have a maximum not to exceed price, how do you choose one proposal over another proposal if nobody's guaranteeing a price?
What we care about, because we can control, we're in, we're in the design process, so we were in this design process. They knew what our budget was, we operated within that parameter, they don't get to go out and build it, or design a $20 million building, they knew what the budget is. We, what we wanted to know as a part, if our budget is $6 million, what portion of that are you taking as profit? What portion of that are you saying you need for general conditions? What are the soft costs? And that's how we compared. How much, what percentage of this $6 million is going to go to soft cost, cost and not actually go into the actual hard materials and labor to build the building? And that's how we basically sorted out. But it wasn't just money, it was also, it just worked out that the two were, we were also looking at the quality of the work that you did. So their architect as a part of that bid process, or proposal process I should say, was they brought their architect on and their architect gave us some ideas of their architectural style, their architectural proposal for the project. And we knew very quickly that we didn't want to build a metal pole barn, and we had a number of proposals that say, "Oh, we can keep you in budget, we're going to take a significant amount of fee, or we're going to take a significant amount of general conditions, or we project that and a lot of soft costs, but we can still stay within $6 million because we'll build you a metal pole barn." Well, they got discarded very quickly in the vetting process because we didn't want to build a metal pole barn. That was not what we were looking to build. We wanted to build a substantial structure inside a $6 million budget, which has been a real challenge to get the kind of building we want architecturally for the price we want. That's been a challenge, I don't deny, and Rockford's been fantastic, as progressive the architects. But it's been a lot of beating back and forth to get, to stay in budget, but get the kind of structure that Jackson can be proud of, Jackson County, and will be durable and energy efficient. Those are two things I care about because your operating costs, you might be within budget, but you may wake up 20 years from now and think, "Why did I do that?" Because your operating costs are out of control, because you're not very energy efficient and you're putting a lot of money into capital repairs. So those were things we considered in this design build. I'm not a big fan of design build, but it was what, what our partner in this financially wanted, and it's doable. I've done it before, it's just not necessarily the way I typically like to go. But it's not up to me.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Well, first I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation today and the level of in-depth that you gave us and a lot of the questions that you were asked today. And I just have just a, maybe just one or two questions. Me personally, I'm a, I'm big on small business, I really like to see the development of that. So to see that, or to hear that you've been receiving some bids from local and small companies, or maybe not small, but local companies I should say.
Some are small.
Yeah. So I appreciated hearing that. But has all of the work that this project is going to need done, have all of those projects been assigned or allocated?
No, they, that's the bid that just, what in numbers are probably more contracts, but they're, they're smaller in scale. So obviously, the giant walls that have got to go up, those are big in scale. That contractor is not a local contractor, Kirkstra, there are no local contractors who build prefab concrete, commercial walls. There's only a few in the Midwest, like I said, and they've got to be trucked in. But that's one contractor. Mechanical, electrical and plumbing, big, big chunks budget-wise. The mechanical HVAC systems, heating and cooling, that is a local contractor. And the, the electrical, which is another huge chunk of it. So you got Applegate, they're local, and you got Hearst, they're, they're the electric. And they're both local contractors who are doing a million dollars worth of work on this project. And they've been in, that's a design build too, inside of a design build. We brought them on to work with us as we designed the building to make sure that we built the most efficient and effective heating and cooling systems and electrical systems to operate the building and that we didn't have heating and cooling ducts running through, very unattractively running through event spaces, that we, we designed this so that there were proper chases behind scene for all of that. So they've been on, they've been partners since last fall in the project. The plumbing went to, which is important, but it's not dollar-wise as big a chunk of this. That went to a group out of Wayland, Michigan, Accurate Plumbing. There were locals, in fact, some of
What was the name of that, I'm sorry?
Accurate Plumbing. And then the fire suppression, which is a little piece of this, but very important, but in terms of dollars and cents, a little piece of this, went to a company out of Battle Creek that does most of the fire suppression in commercial buildings, quite frankly, across the state of Michigan. There are a lot of folks who do that work. So those have been out for a while. But now carpentry, floors got to be poured, all the concrete work, painting, all the AV and technology systems, all of the steel work, the outer shell, the pre-function space, the offices, the meeting room, that's all put on front of that concrete box. So that's got steel work that's got to be built for the roof and framing structures, that's all got to be done. Landscaping and excavating's all local work, it's got to be done. Those are what are out, right, or were out, they closed on Friday. Rockford possesses those, I have not seen those yet, they're still going through them and by the end of the week I'll get a glimpse at them. Again, Rockford holds those contracts, the county doesn't hold them, but they do affect the price, so we want to see them, we want to know who they're choosing. We from day one have said, "Local, local, local," so we want to make sure they've done everything they can to, to review these. Price is important, but there's a balance between price and who's getting the work. And so we've, we've been partners with them in, in reviewing those. So we'll know those answers and those are, ensure numbers of contractors, those packages, there are more people, there are more companies, and there are more of the smaller companies you're referring to. Masonry work can be done by some of the companies here and, all of those can be done. And small and large, there, there's no reason somebody locally couldn't do most of that work if they're competitive. We've said to all of them, "You got to sharpen your pencil. We're not going to pay 30% more because our budget won't allow it to stay local." But if we're a few dollars more, then we're going to go with the local folks.
So does, my last question, does, Rockford, do they approve all of the bids?
Yes, they get final approval because we're, we're hanging all the liability and costs on them. That's that guaranteed maximum price that we'll bring back to you. We get to work with them, but they got to stay in budget.
Sure.
And that's what we hold them to, is to stay within, within the budget range that we gave them. So yeah, they, they, all the liability lies with Rockford between them and the subcontractor.
And then that actually just spurred, just one last question, I'll let you go. Would we be able to see a running list of bids that have been approved?
Yeah, once they're done, the bid tabulations we can make available.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, no further questions, Chair.
Okay. I got into the weeds a bit and I apologize, but I did eat up more time than I was supposed to probably. Any, any other questions?
Would the JDOT ............................................................................................................................................................ Have you called and told us where the potholes are? Have you notified us so we can get the crews out there to get them taken care of? And have you used the website tool to identify it? Because we have machinery that's designed to do fixes on potholes. Overall, yes, the crews will be, could be down here doing this, but there's also times when you have work where you can do parking lot work, but you don't get to work on roads. We have weight restrictions in place now on roads for the next, who knows how long, because they moved on and off this last year. And the analysis is, is that they can have some of the other crews be working on things and move things in and out. So that would be my response, and that is the response that I've given to people.
Yeah.
Okay, is that where are the potholes and we'll get there and get them cleared up as fast as we possibly can.
Yeah, and Christopher and I've had long conversations. The park, they're part of the parking lot, isn't, isn't going to be weeks, we're not talking weeks and weeks that JDOT will be there, they'll be in and out very, very quickly. It's the site prep work, the grading work, the fine grading work that takes the longest, and that's being done by the general contractor. So there's, in this case, not a, like a road rebuild where they'd have to do all that, that other work. This is purely the rough core and then the, and we're hoping to use some experimental, we're hoping, can't promise, but we're hoping to use some new ideas that Christopher has for, for asphalt mix. So I think, I don't know that he's introduced that to you guys yet, but he will. But it's using recycled plastics as a part of the process, which would be a great thing to showcase at the fairgrounds as an agricultural location.
I just think it's worth mentioning, maybe it's been said already, but any work done there by the road department is compensated. It's not like we're using Act 51 monies to pay for that. So any work they do is compensated through the project.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Christopher won't be as long-winded at general government. Thank you.
Any other items to come before the board? Any other questions that commissioners would like to ask while we got Mike trapped here? Seeing none, we're at the second time for public comment. Any public comment? We've arrived at commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, just to mention as well, I guess just to echo my comments just from before, I'm really glad to see that with our construction project at Keighley Park that we are using some local companies. I'm really big on, you know, investing into our own, into our communities and by receiving and accepting these bids, that is one way that allows us to do that. If we want to continue to thrive and to move forward, one of the bases of that is our economic development, so allowing us to pour money back into, into these companies certainly does help us to become that stronger Jackson County that I believe that we are and that will continue to, continue to be. Secondly, I kind of as a privilege and an honor to be able to serve this eighth district as we move forward. And yes, I am one of the, one of the new guys, I'm still learning, I find myself constantly reading different materials and looking at different ideas and how to do things. But if there's anything that you may think of to, and this is more I guess to some of our seasoned veterans here, anything that I can be reading or doing to help us to move forward as a board and the things that I can be doing within my district, please let me know. I don't want to waste time. I didn't do this just to see my name in lights, I legitimately and honestly want to be able to serve and to be able to do whatever I can to create a better place for the place that I love and call home. I had the, after college, I had the opportunity to, to go elsewhere, but I chose to stay here and I plan to be here. And so I just want to be able to, to be effective in what I do. So if there's anything that you could share or have any materials that I could read that can continue to better educate myself in this pursuit, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment. I sent an email out with a link to an article, actually two emails, separate issues. But the one, I am going to go meet with Mr. Snyder as soon as I can. I have had residents reach out to me who don't happen to be in my district, but it's in a bordering district, and they are concerned that there's a, an elected county official representing a firm in a lawsuit against private, private citizens are taking against that firm, excuse me, and that that firm actually has contracts with the county. So I'd like to hear his side of things as well, but I wanted to bring up my concerns on that, just as the perception that the public takes on that. And he may consider recusing himself from the case altogether. The second thing is, hopefully everybody's been paying attention to our wonderful governor and her proposal on the 45 cent at the pump tax increase. We're currently already the number six state in the nation for prices at the pump. We should really take that into consideration, should that go forward, because we all know we're pressing local communities to pass millages, take care of their second, their neighborhood roads, as state funds don't allocate towards that. So I'm concerned the costs are going up for residents. Obviously, we don't have any say in the state matters, but we certainly could urge our state representatives from this area, Senator Shirkey, State Representative Alexander, State Representative Lightner, who, two of the three happened to be commissioners at one time, and urge them not to support that plan to pass on additional costs to the residents of Michigan.
Any other commissioners?